Well, open the planning board meeting for December 1st, 2020. This is being recorded. But if anybody else is recording it, they just need to let us know. That's fine. Anybody else recording it? Okay.
Yeah, it's all right.
So. I'll just ask everybody, as we've done in the past, because this is being done via Zoom, per the governor's orders, to go into the chat and sign in with your name and address so that we can use that as basically the sign-in sheet that we normally have over at Town Hall. All right, 7 o'clock PM, Town Planners Report. Alan?
Good evening. Since our last meeting, I've continued on numerous talks regarding the 85-acre parcel, which is 12 A and Rs on Mort Harding Road with possibility of two estate lots, and then also a future subdivision road. I met, I met, I met with the design engineer, surveyor, as well as a new, as a new owner, and they're going to be coming in shortly, within the next month or so. We kind of have preliminary ironed out a lot of the works to make sure that they were they're on the right formate, 814 and, and 315. Also, Megan and I have received inquiries to land north of Sarah Drive. It's a large, there's a large parcel of land, but we do, we do have, basically, they off of Hillside, you know, they've come in for that flexible subdivision, and it impacts one of the large parcels of land, and I think the people don't want to buy that with that stipulation on it. Also, we received an A and R map for the Kellogg Brothers for modification to properties. Their attorney is supposed to zoom in tonight to talk about the properties. And is my intent, looking at the plan, it looks like they're trying to combine two parcels to make it one consecutive lot. But it can ease, but I looking at the, Michael brought it to my attention, looking at the town GIS, it already looks like it's already one lot. And the only thing I know is I know South Kellogg's been trying for years to finalize all of the properties, because a lot of the people have come out of the woodwork saying they have rights aways and, and things that he's been trying to oblige them with. At one time, he wanted to give a large parcel of land, open space, but because of the the neighborhood dilemmas. And so I think this is probably an effort to try to finalize some of his paperwork, but I really like the attorney to chime in to clarify that, or we also invited the, the engineer, Heritage Surveyors.
They're, they're on, Alan.
Oh, they are on? Okay. So that should be easily resolved. And then, again, over the past few weeks, you know, I've been, I've been reviewing. We've been receiving a lot of information from Verizon, as well as the neighborhood. And we've been trying to transfer as much information into all the necessary parties as we possibly can. There's, there's quite a bit that's accumulated over the, over the period of time, and that would be it.
All right. 7:05, public comments. Does anybody have something that is not on the agenda that they want to bring to the planning board's attention this evening? Okay. So let's go to 7:10, 355 North Loomis Street, A and R. I saw a Mark Reed with Heritage Surveys, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
I am here tonight. I'm Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. Unfortunately, the attorney cannot make the meeting, so I'm representing the Kellogg Brothers tonight.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to check on that so we can go forward. So why don't you just explain?
How many, how many members do we need present for this?
We have, oh. We have three, correct? Don't we? Plus you? No?
I can't speak on A and R, so I just want to make sure the three.
We have three, which I believe is what we need for those.
Very good.
Yeah, no, you, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I wasn't thinking about that. Okay, so, Mr. Reed, why don't you, if you could, just describe what the, what's being done, and then we can kind of go from there.
Sure. Would you like me to share the plan with you? So the people can see it, or just speak to it?
Yeah, you can. Hold on one second. Let me just. Yeah, so if you, if you're able to share your screen, great. If not, I can share the plan, but why don't you give it a shot and see?
You see? Looks like. Okay. So can everyone see the plan?
Yep, I can see it at least.
Okay. Let me just zoom in on it. It's, again, I know that the planning board has seen other plans submitted by the Kelloggs for this piece of property. This really focuses in on a parcel of land, excuse me, that's shown on the plan as parcel E1 and E2 being located in this section of the property. This remaining 125 acres is owned by the trust. But this particular piece of property is owned by the Kellogg Brothers. So again, I mentioned that the Kellogg's have been trying to, Seth has been trying to resolve the ownerships of the properties and, and so forth. So what is being proposed is you'll see that on parcel E1, and I'll zoom in on it. There's an existing house just to, and garage just off of North Loomis Street. On parcel E1, he's creating, or they're creating a 4.02-acre parcel of land that would be associated with that house lot. That also runs up along the side of the right-of-ways that have been agreed to over the past few years. E2, which is a 5.918-acre parcel of land, is to be conveyed by the Kellogg Brothers Trust, and incorporated with the additional 125-acre parcel, which abuts it to the north side of the property, which is all this parcel here and wrapping around the back of the property.
So let me just ask you, does E1, are E1 and E2 a single property right now, delineated property?
Correct. They're a single property owned by the Kellogg Brothers.
Okay. And the goal is to, I mean, I guess initially divide that into two, E1 and E2, and then you also are going to add some to E2 later on?
Correct. So E2 would be added to the 125 acres of the trust.
So here's the issue that at least I see, in looking at it, and we were trying to make sure exactly what was being proposed, but the, this is an R40 zone, the frontage would have to be 200 feet property. So E2 does not make it to the 200 feet.
Right. There's a note on the plan that E2 is not a, you know, a building lot, and it's going to be incorporated with the adjacent 120 acres. The, the E1 lot has 200 feet of frontage along the street. So if you look at, let me, to the notes here.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just going to have to refresh my memory back with the A and R statute to see whether that is allowed. I just don't remember.
Yeah, 124 acres, if you go more to the right of the property, they have 200-foot frontage. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, let me, let me zoom in on that right now. So the frontage that goes with the 125 acres.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Runs along, it's 105 plus the 93.
Okay, so there you go. All right.
So it has frontage.
Okay.
So we're just adding land into E, to the 125-acre parcel of land.
All right. And so, and if you just back out for one second, Mark, if you could a little bit, so I can see the full E.
To the pen over here, second.
Take your time. So in reality, the line, the, the straight line from, from the bottom to the top on the right-hand side of E2, that, other than where it, it abuts that front property that belongs to someone else, that's going to, that's not going to exist, right? I mean, that's going to be the one up by months, and that's.
Right. So basically.
The 456, the 456.61, that line is going to be dissolved.
Correct. As well as this little L coming back that meets this abutting piece. So that gets dissolved, incorporated in the larger 125-acre parcel.
Okay. So I think it's fine for an A and R. I mean, I guess, in my head right now is whether it just has to be slightly more detail on the plan to figure out, to make sure that that's clarified, that that.
What they should do is that, that one common line, the 456.61, it should, they could, they could Z through that, showing that it's a contiguous parcel with 124 acres.
Yeah, if you look at note number two on the plan. So let me go to that. My mouse will come. So it's, note number two reads that parcel E2 is to be conveyed to the trust and incorporated with adjacent land to form one parcel of ownership.
So here's the only, here's the only tweak of that note that would make me feel better, and just because when we read it, I could see it going either way, which is, if you could just specify that the quote-unquote adjacent land is, and I don't care whether you want to put the, you know, acres, acreage of 12474, whether you want to put the book and page, there's something to sort of identify that versus E1, which is also adjacent land owned by the trust, right? So that's.
Yeah, E1 is owned by the Kellogg Brothers.
Oh, okay. All right. No, fair enough.
So yeah, E1 is owned by the Kellogg Brothers.
If you look to the left, isn't there some other land that's owned by a trust to the left?
Yes.
Right away?
Is that where?
Right there.
Yeah, that's, I knew there was somewhere where we had.
Is that the same trust? Is that the same language? I can't.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would, what Alan recommended is to put a Z across that line right there, that where your cursor is, put a Z across there to know that that is connecting to the north, I guess you would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
What it is, what it is, Mark, it's, it was confusing, because at one time I thought that you were taking parcel E2 and combining it with E1, which is adjacent to the Constance Kellogg property to the south. But it's just, it's just a minor clarification.
Sure. Sure. We could do that.
And so that's fine. I don't see any issue, you know, I'll sort of defer to the engineers here to, what they want on the plans, you know, but to me, that makes more sense to have something on there to delineate that. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so why don't we take a vote? Let me just see who is here. I know I saw Dave Sutton come in. All right, so we'll take a vote to approve the A and R with that one tweak to the plan, and then we can sign that. So do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
I hear a second.
Dave's been a second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty.
Aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Dave Sutton, aye.
Perfect.
Dick's not here?
Dick is not here yet. Okay, so that's all set. Mark, if you could just make that change and get the plan over, we'll arrange to do the physical signatures and, and get that, get that done with.
Okay, sounds good. I'll get it to you, drop it off, Town Hall.
Yep, just be in touch with either Alan or Megan. It'll take care of whatever, you know. Okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
Okay. So we have, let's see here. 7:15, Verizon Cell Tower, Public Hearing. Okay. So. The first thing to address is that based on the supplement, based on the documents that came in, I guess last week, I forget when, but last week. There's a, the one, one document, at least, there may be more than one, but the one that caught my attention was a report from a Realtor, which said, and I'm not quoting, but basically said that there would be an impact on property values, both marketability and property value, for any property within half a mile of the cell tower as proposed. That to me, to me is what I had discussed early on, as far as conflict of interest. I don't see how that, I see that that's a, falls directly under the statutes for me for conflict of interest. I don't see how I can get around that. Town Council doesn't see how I can get around that. So, and so I, I think at this point in time, I have to recuse myself from this. So I will turn it over to Marcus Phelps to, you know, run this portion of, run the hearing. I can certainly participate in the running the meeting. When this hearing is not going on, I also can, you know, I believe and understand participate some degree as a member of the public, because I still am a member of the public from the town of Southwick. So I, but I will certainly try to avoid any, you know, discussion that I would normally have as a member of the board, and only speak during the parts that the members of the public can. Anybody have any questions on that?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, my name is Michael Fenton. I'm a partner at Schatz, Schwartz &amp; Fenton in Springfield, Council to Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Our address is 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100 in Springfield. Mr. Doherty, the first thing that I would just like to point out is that Verizon contests that there would be any diminution in property value to surrounding property owners, and we have submitted evidence into the record in the form of a certified appraisal, the author of which is on this Zoom tonight to testify to his methodology and the reason why we've reached those conclusions. And I would, I would submit for the record that, that just because the board receives a letter alleging that property values would be affected negatively by a tower without any evidence to support that allegation, doesn't make it true. And so I just wanted to say that for the record, and we're prepared to very competently and based on evidence contest that assertion, that there is any impact to property values, and we're prepared to do that tonight. If, Mr. Chair, you are nevertheless convinced to recuse yourself, my next question would be, who will be the voting members that we'll be dealing with moving forward?
So I certainly appreciate your opinion on it. I mean, unless, I, I'd say this. I don't necessarily agree with it. You know, there's, there's a lot to consider about it. You certainly put in evidence that goes against it. But at the same time, it's not so much about actual, you know, impact and a lot about perception, right? And so it, it's in my mind a kind of a no-win situation, right? No matter which way I go, there's some question about whether or not the, 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 the fact that it could impact my property played a role, or whether I, you know, intentionally chose to ignore it so that I could continue to be a voting, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, I think, if you had sort of run the game theory, a lot of problems that arise. I also don't take lightly the fact, and I can't remember what section it is, there's a couple of sections that I think this comes up on. One is, you know, the financial interest. There's two financial interest sections, I believe. I know, I think it's Section 13 does have a punishment of imprisonment in state prison by not more than five years. So, you know, there is some degree of penalty there, not that I think that they actually would do that, but there is some degree of penalty there. I also don't take lightly the fact that as an attorney in the Commonwealth, while many people won't believe this, we actually get licenses based on character and, you know, what we do, and so I, something that is a bit on the line ethically, I don't want to jeopardize any kind of, you know, licensure issues as well. So I think that, that is in my decision. Town Council was pretty clear in agreeing with me that, that the fact that they have evidence, and it's not, you know, I think people have said property values may lower, but when you tie it to someone who's a licensed Realtor in the Commonwealth, and you put it in writing, you know, whether you agree with it or not, it's still evidence. And I don't see a way around that. So you know, if anybody has anything else to offer, I'm happy to consider it, but I'm, to me, that's a, it's pretty black and white, I think, at this point in time.
Mr. Doherty, who, who would be the voting members if you were?
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you asked that, and I apologize, I didn't get to it. So right now, so Marcus Phelps is the vice chair, you know, he would take over leading the meeting, he would be a voting member. Dave, or Dick Utzinger, who, Dick certainly speak up if you're on the meeting, but I don't remember seeing him pop in. You know, and, but he could obviously have put an affidavit and, and be a voting member. Dave Sutton, who is on the meeting and has made every meeting. Dave Spina is a, is a member, a voting member, and then Jessica Thornton, who is the alternate member, would take my place as the voting member. You know, under the, under the statute that allows for alternate members for planning boards.
Okay, so, so there would be five voting members, and there would be no alternate in the event that someone later recused or was unable to participate. Is that right?
Correct. But my understanding, too, I mean, just to make sure, my understanding is all, all we would ultimately need is four voting members to be able to vote on it, because a vote for a special permit, to grant a special permit would require four, four members for a five-person board to, to vote for it. So you know, I think you, you technically could go down to four, even if you, you know, if there was an issue there, but hopefully, hopefully, we're, we're getting toward the point where we can see the home stretch and sort of get this done and not have anybody miss any other meetings. Anybody else have anything to address as far as the conflict issue? Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. If anybody's joined late to this hearing or to this meeting, appreciate if you would sign in on the chat. This is a continuation of the public hearing for the Verizon Cell Tower, and we've already gone over who is available or online from the planning board to participate in the hearing. And I guess, first off, I would call on Attorney Fenton to provide any comments that he has on the supplementary material that you provided. I'd appreciate it if you could keep the presentation to about 15 to 20 minutes, because I'm sure we're going to have some other information provided during the hearing tonight. So with that said, Attorney Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, it's Attorney Michael Fenton with Schatz, Schwartz &amp; Fenton for Verizon Wireless. I'm joined here tonight by our full complement of the Verizon Wireless team, including my colleagues, attorneys Ellen Fryman and Stephen Sobey. I'm also joined by Jay Latori and Kip DeVito, our two radio frequency experts, Dean Gustafson with All Points Technologies, who is our wetland specialist. Jerry Franklin is with us on the Zoom tonight, Mr. Chair. Mr. Franklin and his company, Bennett Franklin Real Estate, prepared the appraisal that was submitted in the second supplemental filing. We're also joined by Sylvester Behemi, who is our engineer with Hudson Design Group, and David Vivian, who is the leasing and site acquisition specialist with Structure Consulting. So, Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, we did submit what amounted to our third supplemental submission on November 25th, before Thanksgiving, and I'll just very quickly, in the interest of time, as you indicated, give a high-level overview of the documents that were submitted. There's one of those documents that I'd like Mr. Latori and Mr. Gustafson to go into some greater detail on. But other than that, I think the rest of the documents sort of speak for themselves, and if there's any questions from the chair or the public about it, we're certainly happy to address them after this summer. So the first document that you received was an updated engineering necessity case prepared by our radio frequency experts. This document bolsters Verizon Wireless's written testimony based on questions from the planning board at the last hearing. Specifically, a list has been added to describe the existing wireless telecommunications facilities, including tower heights in and around the proposed site, and describing why those facilities are not feasible solutions to the coverage gap that Verizon is experiencing in this area of Southwick. The second document was an updated statement regarding alternative facilities. This document has been updated a few times at the request of the board and the public, and it's now been updated to include Verizon's assessment of the property owned and controlled by the Massachusetts Highway Department off of Feeding Hills Road, and concluding that that is not a feasible location for our, to solve our coverage gap. There are also new coverage maps, one from the LaCory property, which was requested. There are also new coverage maps, one from the La Coria property, which was requested. Although we've eliminated that site from consideration, the board did ask that we prepare a coverage map from the perspective of coverage that would be provided if there was a site built at that location. I want to stress that that's not under consideration. However, we did prepare that map and submitted into the record. Similarly, we submitted coverage maps for parcel five. And the property known as parcel five behind the high school and the high school property itself. We additionally submitted some testimony from Hudson Design Group, written testimony summarizing their practices and procedures for conducting the bloom flow. And Mr. Chair, it's my sincere hope and goal that by the end of tonight's hearing, we will have a bloom float scheduled for some time in December. Additionally, we prepared a written response to the PowerPoint that was presented at the last hearing on November 10th. And we submitted that testimony in writing responding on a slide by side, slide by slide basis to some of the statements that were made in that PowerPoint. We also submitted our own testimony from a Realtor Suzanne White describing the marketability of properties in the proximity of a cell tower and her statement that there is no negative impact on property values in that context. That supplements our certified appraisal from Mr. Franklin. And last is a constraints map, Mr. Chairman, that was provided by Verizon Wireless for lot five. And this document is actually a set of three different maps which show the constraints that a tower on lot five, and this is the parcel, the large parcel behind the high school, would need to comply with. Specifically, the map reflects the primary constraints of tower height, associated setbacks and wetlands. And the reason that there's three different maps is that at the board chair, a former board chair, Mr. Doherty's request at the last hearing, we did take a closer look at the topographical outlay at that parcel and looked at each of the different topographical locations where a tower could be located. And each one of them led to the same conclusion, which is that none of them will allow Verizon Wireless to comply with the rigorous standards in the Southwick zoning bylaw. So, again, we're happy to address any of those documents specifically at the board's discretion. But Chairman Phelps, in the interest of time, I would like just to have either Mr. Latori or Mr. Gustafson share their screen with respect to the constraints map for lot five and walk us through specifically what that map shows and why it is that after an exhaustive review, Verizon's determined that that is not a feasible location for a tower. So with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman Phelps, I would turn it over to Dean Gustafson to summarize and give us an indication of those constraints maps.
Okay, if he needs to share a screen, Mr. Doherty is going to facilitate that.
He should be able to do so.
Thanks, Dean.
You're welcome. Thanks. Good evening, folks. My name is Dean Gustafson. I'm a senior wetland scientist of All Points Technology. We worked with, with Verizon, with Jay Latori, the RF engineer to look at it at the, a couple of different locations on lot five. And determine based on the tower height requirements to satisfy RF objectives with the limitations that, you know, tower height can't exceed 150 feet. Look at a couple of different locations at slightly higher elevation than the originally proposed location. And evaluate those locations based on the, the zoning setback requirements. This first figure, which we've identified as alternative site A was, is at the same location that we showed the board last month. And based on the setback requirements, the entire site is encumbered by those setback requirements for 150 foot tower in this location. And that's why the entire lot is shaded as, as red. And so flip to the next. So this shows a tower location. The tower height is 148 feet. It's located a little bit further to the northeast from the original site A. And it's at a higher elevation, as you can see by the contour here. It's at one of the higher elevation points on the, on this parcel. Here again, we evaluated 148 foot tall tower based on the setback requirements. And the entire lot is restricted due to those setback requirements. And then finally, we looked at a location even further to the east at this kind of local high point on the lot. In that location, we evaluated a tower height of 138 feet. With the exception of a small area that my curse is over, that's kind of located near this label for lot five. The lot isn't, is almost entirely still encumbered by the tower setback zoning requirements. So it's based on this analysis, there isn't a feasible location on this parcel that could accommodate the RF objectives and satisfy the town's setback zoning requirements.
So, Mr. Chair, if there's any questions about those maps, we're happy to, we're happy to answer them. I know Mr. Latori also submitted potential coverage maps from this location, which show the negative impact of having a site at parcel five or the high school for radio frequency purposes. But based on this analysis, it's clear that we cannot comply with the black letter requirements of the bylaw. And I'll leave it to your discretion if you'd like us to go into that further analysis.
Okay, thank you. First off, are there any questions from members of the board related to what has been presented?
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying here. So we've, you evaluated a few different cell tower heights on the plot. I understand in most cases, the setback requirements basically made it so you couldn't cite it there with the exception, I think, of site C, where there's a small little area there where the 138 foot tower, I think it was 138 foot tower could conceivably go and still meet the setback requirements. But was it, was it RF performance constraints that I guess made it that the, the towers had to be as high as you had proposed in the locations they were?
Jay, do you want to answer that? Jay, are you available to answer that question?
Good evening, Mike. Sorry about that. I was double muted. I apologize. Good evening. This is Jay Latori, 122 Forest Hills Road, Springfield, Massachusetts. I'm an RF design engineer for Verizon. Can everyone hear me okay now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. So to answer the question, that is correct. What we did was we looked at each of these three locations. And we needed to first evaluate the ground elevation relative to our existing proposal off Foster Road. As you can see on the map that's displayed by Mr. Gustafson, the entirety of lot five is lower in elevation relative to Verizon's proposal off of Foster Road. And so in each of the three locations, we were looking at two sides of this. One was, as Mr. Gustafson mentioned, is the 150 foot power height limit per the town's bylaws. And the other piece is to, to the greatest extent possible, try and propose a facility that is as close as possible to being the same overall mean height above sea level as our existing facility. So when you, when you look at, for example, site A, you know, we max out at 150 feet of tower height. And we're still a little bit short of what the existing, excuse me, what our proposal off Foster Road would be in terms of overall height. When you go to site B, we gained some elevation on lot five. So we are able to build hypothetically a tower, you know, that is the same overall, you know, height. But obviously to do that, we have to build hypothetical tower that's 28 feet taller in size. And that obviously puts a greater constraint on the setbacks. And, and finally, with, with the location C, which is, you know, the high point in elevation on the parcel, we're only approximately 18 feet lower in elevation. So just to get us back to even ground, we've got to go 18 feet taller in, in tower height. But that's still, given the three and a half time setback, not enough room on this parcel to meet the requirements in the bylaw.
Okay, any questions for the presenters from other town officials? Any questions from the public who are on, on the line? Please state your name and address.
So if I could, Michael Doherty, 16 Lexington Circle. I just, maybe I missed it. What? And I'm trying to look quickly. Is the school, is the school property a residential property? Is it zone residential?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right. And so that limits, you have to comply with the three and a half going toward that side. Okay.
Correct.
Is there a reason why, maybe it doesn't matter, but it looks like there's an elevation just to the left of where it says lot five. Is there a reason why that wasn't part of the consideration? So just to the left of that.
Mr. Gustafson, would you just mind zooming in on your presentation? I believe I can see the, the elevation that Mr. Doherty is referring to, but I just would like to have it zoomed in. Mr. Doherty, I'm, I'm not sure if, if Mr. Gustafson has audio right now or saw his control of his computer. But from, from what I can see on, on the map, on my view, that increase in, or it should say, that depiction of elevation just to the left of where it says lot five, if that's 216 feet, so it's actually lower than some of the other locations that we looked at in particular, alternative site B and alternative site C. So, you know, for, for that reason, we, we didn't look into it because we felt that the, you know, existing three, you know, proposals, or at least two of them are already higher in elevation, which would at least in theory give us a chance to, to lower the tower height and try to meet the setback requirement. None of the three that we already analyzed give us that opportunity, including the elevations. And let me just read them. Site A, which is at 210 feet. Site B, which was at, I believe, 226. And then site C, which is at 236.
And what was the issue with B? I apologize if I missed it.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So the issue with site B is, is that we're approximately 20 feet, I'm sorry, 28 feet lower in elevation relative to Verizon's proposal off Foster Road. So in order to attempt to overcome that drop in ground elevation and provide, you know, the same level of service that we might provide from this lot five, we've got to go up in tower height to overcome the drop in elevation. So we go up in tower height by 28 feet to make up the 28 feet loss in ground elevation. And based on the size of this parcel, as well as the abutting residential boundaries, we can't meet the three and a half time setback.
Hey, Mike, could I, could I say something?
Who is speaking?
We're gonna have to address it tomorrow.
Name and address, please, if you want to comment.
Dave Jajo, 12 Patriots Way, Southwick, Massachusetts. I would like to say that I have walked this property with my cell phone to take elevation measurements. The elevation that I have found was at 260 feet, not the elevation that Verizon is, is submitting. The setback is absolutely not anywhere near what Verizon is claiming. There is plenty of setback at a 260 feet, what 120 foot pole, which would be higher than the property level at 13 Liberty Lane. So I, I guess the other question I would ask, has anybody from Verizon walked this property with, with, with a measurement device to establish what the elevation is at the particular height where this pole is going to go? Because it appears to me that they are looking at the lowest possible height on this property to invalidate it.
Any responses? Anyone walk property?
I would, I would just offer the following comments. We have not chosen the lowest elevations, quite the opposite. We've chosen the highest elevations. At the board's request, we've showed three different options. This is all information that's verified based on the town's public data. Mr. Gustafson can speak to that if you'd like. We have not walked the site. This is a town owned site. We have a lease for the site off Foster Road. And we have evaluated this alternative based on the information publicly available at the request of the board.
Any other questions from the public for this portion of the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, this is Andrew Campanelli. I'm calling from 1757 Merrick Avenue, Suite 204 Merrick, New York. I've been retained by roughly 70 residents. I do have some comments on this portion of the presentation, but I prefer to wait until they're complete to address them in totality, if that's acceptable to you, you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I was planning to call on you next for, you know, any information you would like to provide.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Marcus, would you like us to address questions as a board to Verizon after Mr. Campanelli speaks or now?
Now, if it's part of what has just been presented, sure.
No, it's about the more supplemental materials, but this particular parcel, I'm not looking for further clarification on.
Okay, let's hold that then after we hear from Attorney Campanelli. So Attorney Campanelli, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Since I haven't had the pleasure of appearing before this board, before I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Andrew Campanelli. I'm an attorney. My focus of practice is the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. I handle cell tower matters across the entire United States. I'm admitted to federal courts in 23 jurisdictions. And I handle matters of this type all day long. I have had an opportunity to review the submissions by this applicant. And I will tell you by candidly, I find it somewhat bewildering. It would be hard for me to identify a location I've seen, which has been so void of probative evidence. And so I'm going to try to address some of the issues that need to be addressed before the board. First, I'm constrained to point out that I have reviewed your code from the perspective of the Telecommunications Act. And the town of Southwick, I'm very happy to report, adopted what's called the smart planning provision in section 185 of your zoning bylaws. Under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, Congress actually preserved the local government Under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, Congress actually preserved to local governments the general authority to control the placement of wireless facilities. Now, wireless facilities are, as we understand, a necessary evil, no less necessary than a sewage treatment plant. Nonetheless, local governments have adopted smart planning provisions to achieve three objectives. One is to allow carriers like Verizon to saturate areas with wireless coverage while at the same time, number two, minimize the number of towers you need to provide that coverage. And number three, and most important in this case, is avoid to the greatest extent possible any unnecessary adverse impacts on residential districts and residential properties. Now, when entertaining applications under local zoning codes of this type, sophisticated local boards require applicants to provide probative data to enable the board to ascertain if granting the proposed application would be consistent with your smart zoning provisions. And in this case, no probative data has been submitted and I, I can't understand why. So let's talk about your code from the perspective of the TCA. Typically, local governments will enact zoning ordinances to protect against things like unnecessary adverse aesthetic impacts, reduction in property values. Your code specifically provides for that and this applicant has in no way, shape or form established that granting this application would be consistent with the requirements of your code, quite the contrary show. To the extent that they submitted some photographs of what the tower would look like, they're by no way, shape or means in compliance with the requirements of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. Now, I understand they're going to conduct a balloon test, so I can address that one later. But right now I want to discuss their submissions and their claims, which are completely void of evidentiary support to a bewildering degree. I've looked at probate, I look at propagation maps from all across the country. When someone says that a new tower is necessary to remedy a significant gap in coverage, typically they support that with hard data. What do I mean? Well, what they'll typically do is do a drive test and they will produce to the local board the actual signal strength records. Why? If and only if they provide you with the actual data from a drive test, they then place the board in a position to, number one, know if in fact there is a significant gap in Verizon's service. Number two, the location of that gap and of greatest import, the geographic boundaries of that gap. If and only if you get that data, does it then place you in a position to ascertain if putting the tower here is consistent with your smart planning provisions? If there is a gap and this proposed facility doesn't remedy that gap, then they're going to be back, some now for another tower. So that's no good. One of the earmarks showing that a proposed location is bad is when their engineering and other reports don't say things like this, you can't go in an alternative location because that won't remedy the gap in service. When you see fluff like saying, oh, that site doesn't meet our design objectives, what that may mean is it would cost us more money to put it there. That's not a valid reason to choose a more intrusive location. We're talking about putting a 12-story tower on residentially zoned property and under your local zoning code, it's not permitted, whereas here it would not only violate your code, it would inflict upon the nearby homes the precise types of adverse impacts your code was codified to protect against. It's why you adopted a permit requirement in the first place. Don't take my word for it. That's what your code says. So can they force you to grant this application to let them put it there? No, they can't. The standard by the United States Court of Appeals for the First Circuit is very stringent, okay? For this applicant to say, you have to let us put us there, they have to prove two things. You have to prove that Verizon suffers from a significant gap in personal wireless services and that is a, that is a legal term that has a whole foundation behind it. But they also must prove that this tower at this site, at this specific location on the site and at this height and no shorter, is the only feasible means of remedying the gap in service. If and only if they prove both of those things, then you have to grant the application, even if it violates your code, because that's one of the constraints that the Telecommunications Act imposes upon you. However, who gets to make the factual determination as to whether or not they've proven one or both of those things? Under federal law, you do, this board. You and you alone get to determine if there's a significant gap. They don't get to tell you that, neither the applicant nor their attorney. You and you get to determine, you and you alone get to determine what type of evidence you can require them to produce, as all other governments do across the entire United States. There's no reason for you not to ask them for hard data. Show me the drive test data. Show me the actual signal strength so we can ascertain if this is a good place for that. In addition, it is entirely up to you and you alone, under federal law, to determine the weight to be given any evidence. The most recent submission I saw was a letter from a real estate broker who claims people would rather buy a house near a cell tower than not. Well, if you're a homeowner, you tell me, would you rather buy a house near a cell tower or not? You can give whatever weight to that letter you think is appropriate. You can also consider what way you give to the professional opinion letters that have been submitted, together with the brief that I've submitted on behalf of the 70-plus homeowners that I represent. So at this juncture, quite frankly, the evidence is a complete void. They haven't given you any probative data. Now, when I look, I tried to find something from the engineers that would show that they're placing you in a position to enable you to determine that in fact, this is a, this application is consistent with smart planning and I found just the opposite to be true. When I look at the recent submissions, for example, I look at the, the comments regarding a potential alternative site, 215 Feeding Hills Road. Now, I'm not saying that's a perfect site. I don't know if it is or not. But when I look at the reason why they say can't, they can't use that as an alternative, it says parcel lacks setback distances required, the parcel is not a feasible alternative. Why? I don't know. It is impossible to clean from, glean from this record why these other sites are not permissible sites. Other ones say, and here's my favorite, where it says the parcel, wait, I gotta find the language, I don't want to misquote them. The parcel does not meet design objectives. What does that mean? I'll tell you what that means in layman's terms. When a company, when a wireless carrier or site developer comes to you and says, we can't put a tower there, we want to put it here, we can't put it there because it doesn't meet our design objectives. What that means is we want to put it here, we can't put it there because we want to put it here. That's what it means. They're not saying it's not possible to meet whatever cover objectives they need by putting it on that site. It means they don't want to put it there. Maybe it's more expensive. Maybe the landlord would charge them more money or even worse, it doesn't meet setback requirements. My response is, it doesn't matter. They can apply for a variance. If there's a potential alternative site, which would have a least significant adverse impact on nearby property owners, then under your code, you're required to say no, there's a less intrusive alternative means. And under federal law and more specifically the holdings of the United States Circuit Court of Appeals for the First Circuit, they have to prove that this is the only feasible site to put it before they can tell you that federal law requires you to put it here. But based upon the documents they've submitted so far, it's pretty much completely void of evidence. They give you what I, what I think are supposed to be propagation maps. What I don't see is, they don't even tell you what data was used to create those propagation maps, unless let's give you the data. Without supporting data, these coverage maps have the evidentiary value of a comic strip. You might as well get your grandchild, give him three crayons and let him color a piece of paper. It has no evidentiary value at all. And I'm telling you, I've handled these cases across the entire United States. I don't know of any federal court that say, yeah, this is supported by probative data. I, I just don't understand why they won't give you data. I look at alternative site after alternative site and there is a complete void of data to show why they're not feasible. Now, whenever I see a presentation like this that has no data, I go to Verizon's data. They're claiming there's a gap in service. Okay, well Verizon has its own data and Verizon's data is accessible on a database that's connected to a website. If you go onto Verizon's website and do a search for coverage map and you type in this specific location, Verizon's website links into its database of coverage points and it will show you two things. From Verizon's own database, it will show you the existence or lack of what are called significant gaps in personal wireless service, not gaps, significant gaps. It will also show you the level of service from excellent service to good, to fair, to poor, to no service. According to Verizon's own website linked to its own database, Verizon's website indicates, and a database indicates Verizon has no significant gaps in wireless service in the precise area where they want to put the tower. Now, it's attached as our submission is Exhibit C. Now, you'll hear, you may hear the other side say, well, that's really for marketing and there's a disclaimer that actually says, that doesn't mean we have perfect coverage. I'm not saying Verizon has perfect coverage here. There may be gaps. There may very well be gaps and an additional facility may be required. And I'm not saying you want to stop them from providing service. What I'm saying is you want to force them to give you the evidence you need to put you in a position to ascertain if putting a tower here is consistent with your smart planning provision. And they have not given you one shred of probative data yet, not one. So, um, again, they haven't shown a significant gap. Now, when you look at the evidence that's been submitted in connection with our memorandum and I ask all board members, please read the memorandum that's been submitted, again, it's been submitted by 70-plus of your constituents. And I address substantial evidence and the reason is this. One of the other constraints that the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 imposes upon a board, it says that if you deny a cell tower application, any denial has to be based upon something called substantial evidence. And so, for example, as logic would dictate, if you put a 12-story tower in a residential neighborhood where no other structure is more than two stories tall, it is more likely than not going to dominate the skyline. It's going to have a dramatic adverse aesthetic impact. Well, what is substantial evidence of an adverse aesthetic impact? Well, according to federal courts, the persons in the best position to know and understand adverse aesthetic impacts are the nearby homeowners. They can understand exactly what adverse impacts are. And so when they issue personalized letters detailing the actual adverse aesthetic impacts they will sustain, that constitutes substantial evidence under federal law. And so, in addition to submitting a memorandum explaining to you why at this juncture you have to deny this application, I've submitted exhibits and evidence and in those exhibits, next as Exhibit A are aesthetic impact letters from multiple residents detailing the substantial adverse aesthetic impacts a 12-story tower built in close proximity to their homes is going to inflict upon them. And under Section 185 of your code and the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, that in and of itself is a valid basis upon which to deny this application and it should be denied. In similar vein, federal courts have also ruled that letters from real estate brokers, not just any real estate brokers, but real estate brokers who have an acute familiarity with this specific real estate market, can issue professional opinions whereby they give you their professional opinion as to the reduction in property values that these homeowners will sustain in the value of their properties if you put a 12-story tower right next to their homes. And next as Exhibit B to our presentation are professional opinion letters from real estate brokers, not generalized letters, specific letters, saying if you put this tower where they want to put it, it's going to reduce the value of nearby homes by anywhere from 15 to 30%. Again, under federal law, this constitutes substantial evidence of reduction in property values. And once again, because your code specifically says, the reason for which you adopted a permit requirement is to protect property values, this type of adverse impact is a perfectly valid legal ground upon which to deny this application. So I'm giving you reasons why, under your code, this application has to be denied because it would not only violate your code, but it would inflict upon the nearby homes and surrounding community, the precise types of adverse impacts your code was adopted to prevent. Not my language, it's yours. And that again is taken from the perspective of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. Before I forget, I do want to, if I haven't stated already, I am not admitted to the state courts in the Commonwealth. I have however been admitted to the district, federal district court in the District of Massachusetts and I've admitted to the United States Court of Appeals for the First Circuit, I don't know, for about 15 years, I guess. Um, so that's the majority of what I wanted to speak about. In the event there is a balloon test, I would ask the board to, uh, not be misled by misleading submissions and I'll tell you exactly what I mean. If I understand correctly, this applicant has submitted some photographs, which of course are at best misleading. You see, the whole purpose of a visual impact analysis, when one is submitted to a local zoning board, is to give the local zoning board an accurate depiction of the adverse aesthetic impact that a 12-story tower is going to inflict, not surprisingly across the entire country. When wireless carriers and site developers submit visual impact analysis to a local board, they always do one thing. They never, ever, ever include photographs taken from the perspective of the closest homes. And any photographs that I've seen that were submitted so far, omit any photographs taken from the homes. If there is a balloon test and this applicant wants to submit a visual impact analysis, I would respectfully request that the board request that they take photographs from the perspective of the closest homes, because that will give this board an accurate understanding of the actual adverse aesthetic impact it's going to inflict upon the homes and will place you in a position to know and make an informed decision as to the extent of the adverse aesthetic impact. So unless the board has any questions, um, that's really what I wanted to address. I am hopeful perhaps this applicant sees fit to provide supplement information, including probative data, actual data, not propagation maps, not computer modeling, which is easily manipulated because truthfully, in 95% of the applications I see every day, there's always false and misleading information. I'm not saying this information is false. I'm saying there's no probative data. Look at your propagation maps. There's no sworn statement as to prepared at saying where the data came from that they used to make those gaps, make those maps. And so they're pretty much useless from evidentiary's perspective. And please understand, under federal law, you, this board, you are you, and you alone get to determine what evidence you want to see and you and you alone get to determine the weight you choose to give to each piece of evidence that's been submitted before you. So thank you very much for allotting me the time. Again, if anybody has any questions, please ask them. I do this all day long, all across the country and I, I welcome the opportunity to assist you. Because on behalf of the 70-plus residents who will be adversely impacted by this, I'm not, my goal is not just to persuade you to deny this application, because it should be denied. But at the same time, I need to make sure that you deny it in a way which complies with the requirements of the Telecommunications Act of 1996. It's for that reason that I also put in my brief, that any written decisions you make, you have to reduce to writing and in those decisions, you should make reference to the evidence based upon you, you made each factual determination you made. And there's one final point that I want to address. Right now, they're proposing the tower at 120 feet. If you approve this tower at 120 feet, it may ultimately end up being 140 feet and you would be powerless to stop it. And the reason is, under the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, there's a provision that provides that once a tower is up, the owner of that tower can increase the height by an addition of 20 feet, uh, and the local zoning boards are powerless to stop them. So when you consider approving 120-foot tower, you should always take into account the possibility that it may ultimately end up being 140 feet and possibly inflict even a greater adverse impact on the aesthetics and property values. So again, I want to thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak and again, I'm open for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Campanelli. Uh, first, any questions or comments on his statements from members of the board first?
I'll go if nobody else is ready. Um, I just wanted to state that I've reviewed all the materials updated and provided by Verizon. I reviewed the entire memorandum of opposition, including all of the impact statements provided by the residents. I identified with many of the concerns stated. I moved here from West Springfield myself and fell in love with the small-town feel and my own vista across the way. Um, I agree with the real safety concerns of possible intrusion of traffic that the residents have brought up, either of the teenage kind or those with criminal intent, as well as the numerous health, safety issues such as fires, collapses, ice and other debris falls. Um, I didn't see any members of the police department on the line, but I reviewed our last hearing and their testimony in regards to the addition of their equipment to the tower. I didn't hear that they claim that they have a significant deficiency or numerous dead zones, um, that need addressing. If that is not the case, why are we waiting on a monopole to fix those security issues? Um, and if we don't have such severe, uh, significant deficiencies, then that really doesn't weigh heavily on my decision here. Um, I wanted to address the three things identified in the pre, uh, prior legal decisions that Attorney Campanelli has brought up. The first is the identification of the significant gap, supported by hard probative evidence. The second being that the plan presented is the only plausible solution to remedy that gap. And the third, that there is a minimal intrusion upon the community, which I cannot imagine any reasonable layperson who has listened to the past 12-plus hours of testimony, um, a layperson, professional, legal or otherwise, wouldn't be able to agree that there wouldn't be a major intrusion onto the community. Um, we have not received the hard probative data to support that there is a significant gap. I would ask Attorney Fenton and Mr. Latory to include the dropped call record that they use to identify the supposed gap. I would also like to see the drive test data that would support this. Um, I also don't feel that we have received the hard data to support that this location is the only solution to the gap. Um, I wonder specifically about the data utilized to I wonder specifically about the data utilized to project and draw up the proposed RF coverage maps, specifically the exact height of the pole and antenna, and whether that data point utilized is actually 120 feet, 124 feet, or potentially 140 feet as provided by the Middle Class Tax Relief Act. Furthermore, after reviewing the most recently provided RF coverage maps, including the supposed current coverage, the projected coverage of a proposed Liberty Lane monopole, and the projected coverage of a LaCory property tower, I'm shocked, actually, after looking at those maps as provided by Verizon, that they can continue to claim that there is no other feasible alternative solution to their claimed coverage gap. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
You should be able to, Jessica.
All right. I've never done that before, so bear with me, folks. Can you see it?
No.
Somehow I can't get out of my... How about now?
It's starting. There it is.
All right. So what I've done here is I took the RF maps, like I said, from the most recent updated. Here in the upper left is what we supposedly currently have for coverage in this area of town. Here, we have the coverage that would be provided if we put a Liberty Lane monopole in. And here is the proposed coverage provided by a LaCory property pole. When I look at this and this here, which is the Liberty Lane monopole without the additional coverage, as you can see, was provided here, I'm failing to see the major gaps that are left by a LaCory property pole. In fact, I see added coverage along the southerly portion of South Longyear Road. I see a major increase of coverage along the Connecticut border. I also see an extension of coverage further over into the Feeding Hills section of Agawam. In fact, the only location difference between the coverage maps here seem to be a little bit lacking of an improvement here in the neighborhood that we are currently reviewing. One neighborhood that would not receive benefit from a LaCory property pole is the one neighborhood that doesn't want it. So with that, I think I have addressed all of my concerns. Again, I just feel like at this point, the only major roadblock to a LaCory property project is the need for a variance to our overlay district and Verizon's apparent reluctance to do that, despite all the testimony given and received so far. I think that's it. That's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other board members? Comments? Questions?
I'll just echo, I think, a couple of things that Jessica said. I too read all the material that had been sent in, both by Verizon in the recent submissions and also all of the information from the public. I agree with, I think, some of the statements that Attorney Campanelli made about the overall statement regarding alternate facilities. I found them to be very lacking in in details, in fact substantiating the conclusions that were drawn about the parcels not being feasible. So I guess I'd like to request that, you know, I think additional details would be helpful for each one of those sites and to describe exactly specifically what drove them to be either not feasible or, you know, not meeting the design objectives. And then the other thing really is, it's still, I know we were going to try to get some clarity on the the possible addition of, you know, the ability to increase the height of the tower under the federal statutes or whatever. I think the extra 20 feet or 30 feet, I don't even know exactly how much it is, and it hasn't really been made clear. But that's another thing that, I don't know if we've been able to get any feedback from town council on that. I know we were talking about that at, I think, it was last meeting.
Right. It's a 10% increase, though. And I think Attorney Coyle, our town council, was supposed to provide some input. I don't know that. Alan, did you receive anything at all?
No, I have not received anything at all from Attorney Coyle.
Okay.
All right. It'll be interesting that whenever it is available. And then one, actually, I know I said two things, but now the third thing that just popped into my mind, and that was, I think, when we do start talking about balloon floats, and those are going to happen, I recognize there's, you know, certain restrictions to being able to take photographs on private property and stuff like that. But I think we should try to think about how can we get photos that are more representative of exactly what people are going to see from their own homes and own private property as opposed to, say, street views or public access views.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Marcus, just as a bit of logistics, you talked about Ben Coyle. I haven't gotten anything from him yet, but to be fair to him, he's been dealing with my conflict of truth. So, you know, that was part of his priority versus that. So I expect that'll be to you shortly.
Okay. That would be an interesting piece to have since that seems to be a question that's out there and no one will get it answered or resolved, but we deal with that as it go.
Could I ask a question?
I'm still working on the planning board members.
Okay, sorry.
Any other members and want to ask a question or town officials who are on the line? Okay, open to the public. Was it Dave that appeared? Not Dave, but another Dave.
I'd also like to make a statement, Mr. Chair, when you can.
Okay, go ahead, Attorney Fenton.
Okay, so first, I just want to say that we will respond to Attorney Campanelli's memorandum in writing. There were a whole bunch of statements in there that we'd like an opportunity to provide a full and comprehensive response to. So we intend to do that, Mr. Chair, and we'll do so before the next hearing. I know it was said quite a few times that there's absolutely no probative evidence. I won't get into the specifics of Attorney Campanelli's testimony in that regard, but we have submitted quite a bit of probative evidence over the course of many months and supplemental filings since our first application in April. I want to remind the board also that this district is in the overlay. It complies with all the underlying zoning setbacks, which we have demonstrated. Other parcels in the area do not, including the LaCory parcel. And it is also a town-owned parcel, identified by the town and approved at town meeting and by the select board for a lease with Verizon Wireless, which we have signed for a telecommunications tower. Those are all important facts in this case. With regard to the balloon test, we anxiously await the board's instruction on that. Asked at the last three hearings to conduct a balloon float, and I'd really like if we could get that scheduled by the end of tonight's meeting. In terms of why the locations were chosen where they were, our consultants do that based on their experience in the field and what they think are the locations where the balloon will be the most visible. So with that said, though, Mr. Chair, if the board has specific locations that it would like us to evaluate, now that we are in the hearing process, I would encourage that the board identify those locations tonight so that we can conduct those photo simulations. Additionally, within reason, Verizon Wireless is willing to prepare a sampling of photo simulations from private property. But again, we would need to take direction from the board on that, and we would need written license from those property owners to enter the property along with all the appropriate indemnities. So within reason and at the board's discretion, we're willing and anxious to do that, particularly before the snow starts to fly. Lastly, Mr. Chair, the one thing that I, because we do have Mr. Franklin, who's a certified appraiser on the phone, excuse me, on the Zoom tonight, and he has not been available for some of our other calls, I would, if the chairs are right with it, just like to ask Mr. Franklin to speak a little bit about the appraisal that he compiled. Again, it is based on hard data. It is based on comparable sales in the town of Southwick. And unlike some of the other testimony that's been submitted in the form of a brief, one-page written letter, his was a very comprehensive and certified appraisal that is subject to appraising standards in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I would like, if it's all right with the chair, Mr. Franklin, to have an opportunity to speak to that before the end of this evening so that the public and the board can have the benefit of understanding how that testimony should be weighted more substantially as compared to letters from realtors. Thank you.
Okay, we'll let him speak after I finish any public comments on the material that was just presented by Attorney Campanelli.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Dave Giorgio.
Go ahead.
As regards the balloon test, I challenge the validity of a balloon test at 120 feet, given that if you were to grant them a special permit to erect this tower, the ultimate height could be in excess of 140 feet. That being said, it seems to be reasonable that the balloon test should be conducted at 140 feet that people would expect to see should Verizon increase the height of this tower in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Andrew Campanelli chiming in again. I just wanted to maybe offer a few suggestions. First of all, with regard to the additional 20 feet, you're right to the extent that you said under the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, it initially sells another 10% that can increase the height. But then the second part of that provision says, but they can also include an additional 10-feet separation between the existing tower and any new antenna up to a maximum of 20 feet. That's why they usually go 20 feet. When they increase the height, they add an antenna, and they're entitled to the extra 10% plus up to 10 feet to separate the antenna. So they can go up an additional 20 feet. Now, the way many local governments address this issue on balloon tests is what they do is they ask the applicant to do one balloon test where they put one balloon at 120 and one at 140 at the same time. And that will show you both in a single balloon test, and it's very easy. Now, to the extent that this applicant wants permission to go onto the neighbors' properties, while I've got 70 of them, they can contact me. I'm certainly, I certainly believe my clients will give them position, permission to go onto their properties to take balloon tests, to take images taken from that site. But I do take issue with them asking the board to pick the locations for the views. Federal courts have made it crystal clear where they're supposed to take the views. In the OmniPoint case, which is cited in my brief, federal courts have said quite clear, you're supposed to take them from nearby homes, which would have the worst adverse aesthetic impact. It's usually pretty obvious. And they know that's supposed to be submitted. I'm not pointing to this particular applicant, but OmniPoint came down 15 years ago. Everybody in the industry knows where they're supposed to take balloon tests from. But local zoning boards don't because they haven't read the OmniPoint case. So they come and they say, why don't the board tell us where to put it? No, they know where the photographs are supposed to be taken. If they're going to put a tower which is 50 feet from someone's house, take it from their house. Show the board what it's actually going to look like. And if they need permission to enter the premises, all they have to do is call me. Mr. Fenton, my phone number is 516-746-1600, and I'm perfectly willing to speak about getting access. Thank you again, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
The reason that we suggested that the board select locations, Attorney Campanelli, is because the board asked that at a prior hearing. And so, that's why we've offered them to be able to select locations in addition to our consultants' professional expertise. We are not going to do photo simulations from 70 different vantage points, particularly because the overwhelming majority of them will have nothing to see. But in consultation with the board and yourself and your clients, we'd be happy to provide a sampling of private property owners who are abutters to the proposed facility to demonstrate the visual impact, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. I didn't mean to, if you had a discussion with the board, that's great. And it's probably not necessary to have 70 photographs. On the other hand, it depends upon the way the houses are situated. If this tower is situated where all 70 homes are going to have a broadside view of this thing from every window on the north side of their house, it may be required. I don't know. That's for you, the applicant, to ascertain. Thank you, Mr. Fenton.
Hello?
Okay, I see someone. Deb?
Yes. I looked at...
Address, name?
11 Patriots Way. Deb Patron, and my husband Jim is right here, too. We looked very, very carefully at those pictures that Verizon presented in their application. The only place you could see that balloon clearly is directly in our backyard. If this tower is built, it, we are one of the abutters of this property, and that tower is directly in our backyard. It will take away all the trees that shield our property. And I, and if you look at the pictures, the simulation picture, you can still see that tower in that picture. So I want, if Verizon needs permission to come onto my land to take another picture to prove to me that it's not going to be an eyesore, they've got it. I'm done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know how the board would like to handle identifying the locations. Certainly, the resident who just spoke, we'd be happy to look into doing a simulation from that location. I would say maybe, Mr. Chair, because we have Attorney Campanelli representing quite a few of the neighbors here, if not all, I would suggest that we consider asking that they select maybe 10 or so private properties that they think are going to have the biggest visual impact based on our first simulation. And we would be happy to have the photographs taken from those selected 10 properties on the condition that they sign a license and indemnity agreement allowing us to do that.
Yeah, my thought is possibly to have residents who are willing to allow the photos to be done from their property to contact our planner, Alan Schlesler, Planning Office, 569-6056, to get a list, and then we would go through that list and see how many we could do. I don't know what a reasonable number is. Obviously, 70 seems high. I don't know. I'll have to deal with or ask other members of the board because the other thing is, when these balloon tests are done, it's critical that members of the board walk around, drive around, and observe the balloons from various vantage points. So...
Mr. Phillips, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Why couldn't any of the abutters take pictures from their first floor, second floor, backyard, wherever, and submit them as evidence to the planning board for visual impact?
That's fine. That would be allowed. Yes, I would say. I mean, as planning board members, we need as much information as we can get.
So we need to set the vehicle up for us to be able to do that. So if you're going to do a balloon test, and I still am unclear of what we have agreed to on a balloon height. Mr. Campanelli's argument of 120 feet and 140 feet certainly seems very reasonable. But I haven't heard any feedback from the planning board or from Verizon on that approach.
That's going to be our last item of discussion at this hearing this evening. That is what we're going to close out with.
Um, if I can, Mr. Chairman, um, I think it's a good suggestion. Have the homeowners who are willing to have access to their property for balloon test photos to be taken. I think that's a good idea. Just one caveat, I would ask the applicant, its attorney, not to present anything to my clients for signature without me seeing it. Sometimes applicants, um, will slip in general releases for them to sign before they set foot on the property, and I don't want my clients signing general leases, uh, because that would prevent them from challenging any decision that this board might make if it were to be inconsistent with my, my client's, uh, position. So, thank you.
We would never do that.
Uh, Alan Schlesler. I need some help here. Did you hear what my suggestion was that homeowners who were willing to have photographs taken from their property, contact you to develop a list?
That would be fine. They can call me at the office, or Megan, they, they can leave the information with Megan also.
And then maybe you can facilitate, uh, with Attorney Fenton, uh, looking at the release form, so that can be available for the homeowners to have when photographs are taken.
So I think the release form is going to have to be approved by Attorney Campagnella. He said that he doesn't, he wants to see everything that comes to him.
Correct. That's fine.
So, and I would, and I would just recommend, if there's 70 people, and if you take 10% of that, seven spots is adequate, but you could go to 10. Cause 770, you know, the last ones, when they're flown three years ago, there are only a few small, few areas, uh, two areas out of the whole, uh, out of the whole Lexington circle that you could see it. So those old, those old sections.
Amy Stack, could I, may I make a comment when Ellen's done?
Okay, Ellen, finish up, and then Amy Stack is going to comment.
Well, I'm done. They can, they can call our office. They can leave their name if they'd like to have people come to it. We can see how big the list is, and then I could contact Attorney Fenton, and then he could approach Attorney Campagnella for the, um, for their release.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for a representative perspective, so to speak, you know, north, south, east, west, all around, uh, but not an overwhelming number. And also allow for individual homeowners, if they want to submit their own personal, uh, photos.
I was just going to say, is there, I can appreciate that we want Verizon to submit official photos as part of their submission when it comes to this balloon test, but is there any reason that we are looking at those in specific? Because frankly, I, I want to see photos from everybody's property, and it is my understanding that we're not going to get, have just one photo from each particular property. We're going to have a view from Property A from their backyard, as well from their second story. Um, I just, I feel like we're getting caught up in the specificity of how many exactly are we going to allow Verizon to submit to us? I think we're just going to look for any submission that shows it, correct?
Right, but we don't want to, uh, put an additional burden on the applicant. We have to be reasonable.
But I'm not asking the applicant. I'm, I'm stating that if evidence is going to be provided to the board that shows, hey, we weren't one of the 10% that Verizon took pictures from, but you can clearly see the balloon from our window. Here is our photo. You know, I plan to drive around the neighborhood myself and look if I have a photo that I want to submit to the record. I just want it to be clear to everybody listening that those pieces of information, while not required, and I'm not asking Verizon to produce a slideshow of all these different viewpoints, but I, I would expect that we would take that as evidence.
Right.
And hear it and weigh it.
Yes, I want to, I want to join in on all that.
Dave? Yes, David.
Yeah, Jessica, that's a, Jessica made a great point. The public should have the opportunity to take their pictures and send them in for multiple views. It's not, it's, it's not anything that Verizon has to produce. The homeowners are going to do it themselves, send it to us, so we can make an evaluation based on what they're seeing. It's not going to cost anybody anything.
Thank you, Dave.
Right. Amy Stack, you had a comment?
Yes, I was just, um, trying to make a recommendation on how to streamline the process, so Ellen isn't going to be inundated with phone calls. Um, I would be happy to be the point of contact in working with, uh, Attorney Campagnelli to get those photographs compiled and submitted, similar to what we did before. Um, I know, I understand 70 is a, a large number of folks, uh, but may I suggest that, you know, we compile on behalf of the community, similar to what we did before within our memorandum, and work through, uh, Mr. Campagnelli to make sure that any signatures on behalf of the residents, uh, be reviewed from a legal perspective.
Well, that could be, that could be for the private individual photographs. But for the ones that are going to be done by Verizon, I want that to go through, uh, the planning, planner's office. Okay, Alan?
How do we go about determining what are the best locations? Then, where does that information come from? Does that come from the planning board, or does it come from the residents?
Well, it's going to come from the planning board for the, I don't know what you would call it, official photographs. The photographs that Verizon are, will be doing, getting permission to enter people's property. But then there will be numerous photographs from individual homeowners. And if those are the ones you're talking about that you want to coordinate, would be helpful, uh, if you want to catalog it somehow and submit it to Alan.
Okay, I think as long as there's adequate notice and time for, you know, the, the 10 identified to uh, have a chance to review any, any documents they need to sign off on and be available on those days, because second story, backyards, front yards, the 360-degree analysis is going to be imperative. I think true indication of aesthetic impact.
Okay, I see some other person wanting to speak here. Ann?
Yes, good evening. This is Joe Altalagana, 21 Patriots Way. My question to the planning board is that the balloon test is singular. I, I can't imagine that the balloon test represents the volume of what the monopole coupled with the hardware to drive the, uh, frequencies needed to, uh, transmit the radio waves would represent. It's hard for me to imagine that the pole and all its, uh, fixtures would equal the volume that that single balloon would represent. That coupled with the fact that we expect trees to be taken down means that this test is, is somewhat unrealistic. So my question, request to the board, and express a concern is that if we're going to go forward with a balloon test, make it multiple balloons, and then we can discuss the height. But the balloon needs, needs to represent the volume of space that this commercial 12-story structure is going to occupy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's see. We wanted to go to, back to Attorney Fenton. You had, uh, a real estate person that we would, uh, want to hear from.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Franklin's on the phone, and we'll be happy to speak in even greater detail, uh, at the next meeting, uh, after we have photo simulations about any impacts based on, uh, visual impairment. But, um, with your indulgence, I would just ask Mr. Franklin to, um, speak briefly to the methodology that's used to put together his appraisal. And, uh, we can save the rest of the Tony, uh, rest of the testimony for a future hearing.
Thank you. If we can keep it to 10 minutes.
Hi, my name is Jerome Franklin. I'm a real estate appraiser. Uh, I'm, my office is located in East Longbend, Massachusetts. I was asked by, uh, Verizon uh, to take a look at the proposed tower and how it might affect property values in the neighborhood. Part of that, uh, analysis starts with us looking at, trying to figure out what, what's being proposed. Uh, it's a 120-foot tall tower. It's on a vacant wooded piece of land that's in a residential neighborhood. It is located, you know, pretty much in the center of the wooded spot, wooded site, about 450 feet from the property line, and about 500 feet from a house, uh, from any of the nearest houses. I looked at the photo simulations that were done by Verizon to get an idea of how the visibility would be in the area, where it would be visible from different homes, different streets, different driveways. You know, of course, driving through the neighborhood, taking a look at the site, uh, and, and whatnot. And then the, the analysis requires looking at paired sales. That's part of the difficulty in trying to take a look at how this might impact value. I, I can't take a look at some of the individual homeowners and their properties specifically, because we don't have in Southwick a similar tower in a similar location with similar houses that can see it. So what I've looked for are other homes in Southwick with views of towers, and tried to find paired sales of homes that did not have views of those same towers. And those paired sales, I've tried to find within a short period of time. I don't try to look at something that sold yesterday versus something that sold five years ago. It's trying to find recent sales. It's difficult to try to find the paired sales, because you want to eliminate all aspects of the property except for the cell tower, to try to find out if the cell tower itself has an impact on value. Based on my research, I was able to find, uh, two paired sales of properties in Southwick, from which to determine if there was any the, any decline in value or diminution in value because of the cell tower. And based on that analysis, I was unable to determine that there was any, uh, decline in value. I know that, um, some of the other realtors and brokers have submitted letters saying that there are, that they see value loss all the time. I would, I would welcome any kind of actual paired sale data to try to show that. Um, absent of that, it's, it's very difficult to show that there is a loss in value based on my research that I found.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amy Stack, may I ask that Andrew Campagnella, uh, speak if, if that's okay, Marcus?
Yes, if there's any comments on that presentation.
I have a comment.
Dave, can you please wait?
Certainly.
Attorney Campagnella is muted. Now he's not.
I'm here. Hello. Yeah, um, I wanted to, uh, supplement my brief on this issue, because, um, we, I just saw the, uh, the new letter from Ms. Suzanne White today. So rather than, uh, do this twice, I think I, I address it in writing. You know, to try to use comparables that are 2,000 feet away is, really has no evidentiary value. And again, the specific types of letters that were contained on my submission are the specific types of letters that federal courts have said are sufficient as substantial evidence of reduction in property value. Real estate brokers, you don't have to use a real estate appraiser. You don't need any expert report at all, according to federal judges. Federal judges say that licensed real estate brokers are professionals. And if they are licensed professionals in the area where the proposed tower is, they can offer their professional opinions. And then it's up to this board to give whatever weight to any piece of evidence they deem appropriate. So you look at what's, what Ms. White claims, and what this gentleman claims, based that he can't find anything to give him an idea of, of reduction of property values. And you weigh that against the professional opinions from two brokers from this area that say it's going to reduce the values by 15 to 20, 15 to 30%. No if, ands, or buts. Federal judges recognize that's sufficient, and if you choose to recognize that's sufficient as well, that's completely within your power to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public or town officials?
Yes, hi, Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Joe Altalagana, 21 Patriots Way. I would just like to add that, uh, what we need to keep in mind with this appraisal is context. And one of the, um, attributes, or many of the attributes that are missing here is in the location of this tower, it's a mixed-use area. And let me explain that. In that area, there are certainly these residential homes, but we have a marina. We have a boat sales area within that marina. We have a marina that sells gasoline. We have a package store. We have two restaurants that are closed. That's to the east side. Directly to the north is a small plaza that contains a coffee shop, a physical therapy, um, business, and, uh, what used to be a pizza shop, is no longer there. If we go to the west, and this is all within about a half-mile radius, maybe three-quarters at the most, we find a McDonald's, we find a Dunkin' Donuts, we find a national chain, Big Lots, find a regional grocery store called Big Y. We have Pride Gas Station. And in, in conclusion, immediately abutting, the cell tower is a 20-acre-plus commercial solar farm. So what we have is, is, or what we don't have is context. That appraisals, in my opinion, as a real estate investor, were done within an area that has commercial property and residential property. As a, from my point of view, as a real estate investor, I would take that into consideration when I choose to maybe look for a location for a home or assess how much I would bid on a home. If we were to take that and look at in comparison to our neighborhood, there is no such attribute in this neighborhood. It's open space. Granted, the other location has open space as well, but there is no mixed use within this half-mile, uh, visual area of where they're proposing the cell tower. So I would just ask the board to consider the context in weighting this appraisal that's been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I want to move on. It's coming up on nine o'clock. I want to move on to, uh, at least a brief discussion on the balloon test. At the last meeting, uh, two dates were suggested. One was December 12th, which is a Saturday, and the other one was December 14th, which is a Monday. The idea being that a weekend date would be good for some people, uh, that worked during the week. And then, uh, a Monday date was good for people who may work on the weekends and only be available to observe it on, on a weekday.
Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Steve Shaw from 27 Gear Run. I couldn't get off you quicker before, so I apologize. I just have a question. I wanted to go back to what I heard Jessica say earlier on when we were, when we first started discussing this. I'm interested in the board's opinion on, from what we've heard today, it does seem like, A, the public is, you know, not for the, for the changes that are being suggested and the, you know, around the, the pricing of the real estate, and, and I'm confused about why we would move ahead with a balloon test when we haven't considered why we wouldn't use this alternate site and what the objection to pursuing the La Coria site would be.
Well, that, we have, the board has to respond to the site that is proposed by the applicant. And in order to get all the information we need, we want the balloon test at this location.
So the board wants the balloon test, is what I'm hearing there?
Correct.
See that, I guess my question would be, I don't, based on what we've talked about so far and some of the other testimonials we've heard, I don't see the value in, in the balloon test based on what we've heard. No one believes that there won't be an aesthetic impact. We've already heard from multiple residents that there will be impacts there. I'm not sure what we're proving besides already what we know, which is that there will be an aesthetic impact.
Well, we need a complete record before we can, uh, close the hearing and make a decision, because this has to stand scrutiny, stand up to scrutiny. So, uh, we need all the information we can gather. Uh, members of the planning board, December 12th and 14th, as was suggested at the last meeting, is that still okay?
Yes.
Good for me.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Attorney Fenton?
Those, those dates should be fine. Um, and I think last time we talked about timing as well. And we proposed, uh, eight to 12 for one and 12 to 14. And we proposed uh eight to twelve for one and twelve to four for the other, whichever the board would like.
Uh, run that by me again, the other, you mean different height?
No, different, different times. Um, because there was a discussion at the last meeting that some people might be home during the day or morning and others might be home later in the afternoon. So uh, we would, we would propose to do one of the floats from eight AM to twelve PM. And uh, the second float from twelve PM to four PM.
Board members, what do you think?
I agree that that's appropriate.
Yep, that's good with me.
Yeah, that's fine.
So uh, Saturday would be from noon to four?
Question or statement?
It's a statement, asking, looking for comments back, Dave.
That's, that's fine with us.
Mr. Phelps?
And Mr. Chair, I would also just ask that we have some flexibility given uh uncertainty regarding the weather. Uh, any uh rain or snow or wind velocity that goes above uh wind speed rather, that goes above or close to ten miles an hour would need uh to cancel it. And a lot of times we're not able to know with certainty what the weather will be with respect to wind until a day or two before. So we would just ask the board's indulgence that if for some reason we can't do it on the twelfth, we would propose to do it on the thirteenth. And if we can't do it on the fourteenth, we would propose to do it on the fifteenth. That's not, I, I can't promise that that will happen because it's possible that all of those days will end up being inclement weather, but that's what I would suggest.
I don't think the board would object to any flexibility. I think the concern would just become um coordinating uh scheduling that with the residents who give you permission to go in. That would be the biggest issue with that. For you, I would guess.
Yep. Well, we can, we'd be happy to sort that out through Attorney Campanelli and, and, and just to be clear, the photos that we would be taking would be um outdoors uh at the private property owners.
No bedroom shots, Mr. Fenton?
No.
Okay, so December twelve.
Before you continue, Mr. Phelps, we haven't established what the height of the balloon trial will be.
No, we're working on that. We're setting a date and times. We're going to talk about heights very soon. Okay, uh, twelve on December twelfth, Saturday, it would be from twelve to four PM. And on Monday, the fourteenth, it would be from eight to noon.
Marcus, how are people going to get notified that aren't on Zoom tonight?
Oh yeah, that's another item we talked about. We will get to it. Uh, and I'm not going to have them all call you. Anyway, uh, the heights. Based on what I've been hearing, I would say two heights. One hundred and twenty feet and a hundred and forty feet.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay.
Uh, respectfully, we, we don't believe that that's reasonable. Um, that our proposal is for a hundred and twenty foot tower, not a hundred and forty foot tower. A hundred and forty foot tower would require a variance. Verizon is unwilling to do a balloon flow above its proposed tower height.
Your own testimony admits though that by adding on certain whip antennas that you'd be willing to do for our public safety would extend the height of the tower with those whip antennas added. So even if you are claiming that you wouldn't be looking in the future for additional height um under the middle class tax relief act would still be reasonable for us to ask for that additional height.
That, that is not our testimony.
Well, would you be willing to give us some kind of documentation that's saying you will never raise the height?
No, we will not.
Yeah, both heights.
And we, we're telling you, we want to see both measurements.
We understand. Um, our proposal is for a tower at a hundred and twenty feet. Uh, and that any height above that for our proposal would require a variance. We do not have any plans to increase the tower height. A proposal to increase the tower height is not before the uh, the board is subject to the zoning bylaws of the town of Southwick, which do not require a balloon float. Verizon is agreeing to uh incur that expense as we have with many other supplemental submissions. Uh, we are not willing to fly a balloon float above the height of our proposed tower.
Uh, uh, Mr. Phelps?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Attorney Phelps is completely wrong. Uh, by get granting them a special permit for a hundred and twenty feet grants them the undeniable right to raise this to a hundred and forty feet without a variance. So his argument that a variance would be required for a hundred and forty foot uh float is wrong. And he knows that. Thank you.
Okay, board members, Dave Spina, a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty or a hundred and twenty only?
I'm, I'd prefer a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty. Unless we get some kind of clarity from town council that says it can't be above a hundred and twenty, but I haven't heard that yet. And I don't think we're going to get it in time. So yeah, I vote two balloons.
David Sutton?
I'm still, I'm sticking with one twenty, one forty.
Jessica?
Yeah, I think that's clear. A one twenty and one forty.
Okay.
In order for it to be evidence that we should be able to consider and to be weighted. Sorry, that's the way it is.
So we want two balloons, one at one twenty and one at one forty?
Yeah.
Right.
Flown simultaneously.
Yep.
If possible.
Chime in, Mr. Phelps, uh, Andrew Campanelli.
Can respond.
Okay.
Verizon's position is that it's unwilling to do that.
Uh, Mr. Phelps, I, I want to take note of the fact that Mr. Fenton indicated that your code does not require them to put a balloon test up. And he's correct. There is certain federal case law that says you can't necessarily require them to do something that the code does not require. And then base a denial upon that and that alone. However, you are free to conduct a potential adverse aesthetic impact then in the absence of the evidence that you seek. So if they're unwilling to do a balloon test uh in the manner that you wish, you get to decide the weight of the evidence basis. But you cannot simply say, I want a hundred and forty foot balloon test and ultimately deny it based simply on the fact that they refuse to do something because your code doesn't say that. So just want to make sure that we don't make any mistakes. I, I am of the opinion, quite frankly, if and all the reason that they've indicated some agreement perhaps to put on emergency services antennas on the top in the future, it's only logical to ask for the one twenty, one forty. But if they're unwilling to do it, they're unwilling to do it. That's their right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just very briefly. Um, again, we'll, we'll respond in writing to all of the statements made by Attorney Campanelli in the written legal memorandum. Um, but I would just remind the board that the application before you is for a hundred and twenty feet. Um, and that is what we are willing to fly the balloon at. No higher.
Any other comments from the board? Right now it looks like there will not be a balloon test.
It's, well, a hundred and twenty feet. They would still do one at a hundred and twenty feet, just to clarify, right?
We would be, we would be willing to do that, yes.
All right. In my mind then, uh, if, you know, if we can get, I, I think we need a balloon float of some sort because I really believe that I need to see what uh the view of that tower is going to be from various vantage points throughout the neighborhood, including people's bedrooms and backyards and everywhere else. If it's only a hundred and twenty feet, then I'll just have to, you know, take into consideration uh, an additional height of a tower if, if we find out from the, from the lawyers exactly how that works. But uh, I mean, if I'll take what I can get. I guess I'll say that.
Mr. Phelps, may I reply to Mr. Spina? Corey Roland of Seven Liberty Lane?
Okay.
I just want to say, Mr. Spina, at a hundred and twenty feet, you say you want to see what it looks like, but don't forget how many trees will be down in the realistic scenario. So you won't really be getting to see what it's going to look like.
And, uh, but either way, I mean, I think, I think we need to to get additional vantage points from, of seeing what this is. I don't, I'll, I'll say this, the, the balloon float that had been done already. Uh, while I appreciate uh the fact that Verizon did that, um, and I very much appreciate the fact that they're willing to do another one, I think we need to see um, we need more information in order to be able to really assess uh the aesthetic impact of the um of this tower, proposed tower.
Uh, Mr. Phelps, Dave George from Twelve Patriots Way?
Yes.
I would also like to submit uh a solid model I, with vantage points taken from a camera I, around the neighborhood of the actual structure being I anticipated to be installed on this property. In addition to the balloon test.
You're, you're, you're going to do that or you're requesting it be done?
I will do that.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, uh, David Sutton? We're at a hundred and twenty.
Well, we'll take what we can get for now.
All right, Jessica?
Yeah, I mean, they're only going to do what they're going to do, but it's just, it's not demonstrative of what they've put on paper. And some of their submissions have a hundred and twenty-four feet. Um, they have previously stated numerous times that they'd be willing, more than willing and happy to add additional antenna height onto, in order to service our public safety needs. So um, I find their rebuttal in this refusal uh indicative of a poor working relationship with the board. So, but we will get what we can get, right?
duly noted. All right, we are at a hundred and twenty feet. Two days. Final item is notice to the public.
Actually, Marcus, can I interrupt briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep. One other item I think that needs to be determined is the size of the balloon. I think there's some commentary on and some questions about that.
There was a letter, there was a letter submitted by the balloon company uh four foot diameter. Again, that's less than the twelve foot diameter of the antenna array. But that is what can be used and floated up through the tree canopy.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess in my mind, if that's the largest practical sized balloon that can be done, fine. If they could do bigger, I think bigger is definitely better. Uh, but we just need to know precisely how big it is so that we can then do some scaling of the photographs accordingly and try to, you know, figure out exactly how big it's going to look when it's the real deal.
Right. Yeah.
And we have to imagine it taller, wider and with no trees. So it'd be good.
Correct. Challenging, I know.
Uh, Mr. Phelps? Could we, uh, could we establish uh, uh, some placement for us as abutters to send our photos in to have them part of evidence for I, the view from our houses?
There was an offer made by Miss Amy Stack. I'm sorry, maybe.
Okay. No, I see it. Okay, that's good. Okay, I just saw something from Amy.
The missions, but we could, Alan Slesler could also receive them.
No, I, okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey, Marcus, Marcus, you might want to mention, please ju- just send a couple. We don't need five hundred photos of the review. It'll make it a lot easier.
Thank you, David. Uh, let's see, uh, notification. Uh, I think one level of notification would be a letter. Not a certified letter, but just a letter to the abutters. Alan, have a list?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. Um, Mr. Attorney Fenton has the, the approved list. And, you know, he, they should be actually sending the letters out. That was, that was approved before Michael, right?
We would be happy to do that.
Okay, so it's a letter to the everyone. The only other thing now, uh, Alan, we do have a capability at the town level to uh
Do a robo call?
By certain neighborhoods. Actually, it's that Connect City system can be targeted, I believe. I know we get townwide notices from time to time of things happening. But uh, I think if you could check and see, I believe there's a way to target certain areas. And we would want to do that general vicinity maybe beyond the abutters who are getting a formal letter. You understand what I'm trying to say?
No, I certainly do. I'll, I'll talk to Cindy Pendleton because I think she's the one that generates it.
Yeah. So, board members, do you think that's adequate notice?
Yes, and I think that most of the interested parties will be made aware by their neighbors if not.
Plus you have, you have ninety-nine people on chat right now. So those ninety-nine people should be aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm confident that'll work. I think the only, the only concern I'd have is, you know, and I recognize weather can be uh an unknown factor. But, you know, so we've got the twelfth and the fourteenth with alternates on the thirteenth to the fifteenth. If it becomes some other kind of dates, um, I think we have to think about, you know, pushing it off further as much as nobody really wants to do that, but just pushing it off to some time where we can get adequate notice out to the public, you know, in advance, whatever that might be.
Right.
You know, maybe, maybe it's a week or two that we have to postpone or even into, you know, something like that.
Okay. Very good. Uh, I think we've covered several things in the last uh two hours or so. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, before you adjourn. Um, just in terms of the, the timing, um, the, those float dates should work well for us. Um, but today is already the first. And so uh, if we're going to get letters out to folks, uh, we can do that later this week or very early next week by the seventh, I would say. Uh, so we'll get the letters out no later than the seventh. And in terms of uh, the other, I lost my train of thought here for a moment. I apologize.
Timeframe, timeframe, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of, right, in terms of the timeframe for getting the uh flow. Oh, excuse me, it's about the abutters. So in terms of getting the permission from the abutters to access their properties, I think the board should set a date tonight as a deadline for submitting your address for consideration. And then also uh, set a date by which Mr. Sessler will give us those property addresses. So I would, I would request similarly that that date also be December seventh.
Alan, that reasonable?
It depends on the information that I get, Marcus. The, the homeowners, the homeowners are going to have to acknowledge that, you know, you've got six days, have six days in order to do that.
Well, they would submit their name by the seventh. And then there would be a document set up between Attorney Fenton and Attorney Campanelli. Release form that would be delivered, delivered in hand to these people when they, they uh arrive to take the photographs on the twelfth and fourteenth.
Yeah, Mr. Phelps, I have a question. Is the photo simulation that Verizon makes as opposed to the photos that abutters make uh, of different evidentiary weight?
No.
Uh, in my mind.
It should be uh equal weight. We take everything into consideration.
Okay, so what we will do is uh send our pictures to Amy, Amy Kate. And uh, she will forward them to the planning board.
Sure.
Yes, Amy, Amy, Amy Stack here. I made a comment that you could email me for those of you who have my personal email address or thestoplibertycelltower@gmail.com and we will compile everything. or the StopLibertySaltTower@gmail.com, and we will compile everything. As far as list of residential folks in the memorandum of opposition, you can see the list of people who are opposing this tower, so my suggestion may be that you could start with that list and compare it against the abutters, unless Andrew Campanelli has another suggestion as far as notification is concerned.
Oh, we're gonna notify all the abutters, the legal abutters.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Phelps, I have a comment, I'm a direct abutter to the project, Craig Perro, 18 Partridge Lane. We've spent quite a bit of time and, and tonight discussing the visual impact of the proposed tower. I'd like to know when we can discuss the visual impact of the deforestation for the planned road and the steel gate and the gravel road that many of us will, will wake up to every morning and many more will drive by several times a day.
I can speak to the fact that as a board member, we are reviewing the entirety of the application, including the proposed deforestation in order to put in the installation as well as the road, as well as the gate that would be bordering the property. So we do, we are taking all of that into consideration when it comes to the visual impact. Whether we talk about it specifically in regards this evening, it is all taken into consideration.
Yeah, correct, we would use the site plan to see where the tree removals will be occurring.
Mr. Phelps, can I please make a comment?
Name and address?
Gabriella Peterson, 13 Patriots Way. Related to the 20 foot wide path that's supposed to be constructed by deforesting around the neighborhood, I'd also think it's important to acknowledge that there's nine endangered species in South Lake that hasn't brought, been brought up yet. And that's according to the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Not only does the project destroy some of the species habitat, but it also decreases the privacy and quiet of the neighborhood, which in turn decreases the property value. That's not a disputable fact using evidence, that's just a matter of common sense, think a lot of us can agree on that. And it'll decrease the property value, especially for anyone who might be looking to sell, considering it's an extremely hot market right now. And therefore, this is extremely adverse to the interests of property owners in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phelps, could I speak?
Yes, name and address.
My name's Marie Griffiths and I live on 3 Liberty Lane. And I have been reviewing the, you know, the maps showing the road. And I am very concerned because the road shunts closer to the properties here at 5, 3, and 1 Liberty Lane. And I don't understand why there wasn't a more direct route to the tower. So that's one concern because there are some very tall firs. And it looks to me like those are going to be the ones that are perhaps going to be coming down. And this will severely detract from the aesthetic value of these properties. And I'm also concerned about the road and there being off-road vehicles using that road. There are already people using off, little off-road vehicles going through the woods on the paths that are meant for walkers. So this, this is a real concern too, and I don't think it's been brought up before.
I ask Attorney Fenton, has the center line of the road been staked out at all?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and we also have completed and submitted into the record a tree survey from Cotton Tree Service outlining the very limited tree removal that would be required for the site.
So if I visit the site, I can find a stake near Liberty, Liberty Lane and follow that path into the tower site?
That's a good question. I know that we had some vandalism that took place at the site, Mr. Chair, there were some stakes that were taken from the site, but I, I don't know the current status of the staking. So Sylvester, can you, can you speak to the current status of what stakes we believe to be at the site?
The other thing that could be done is when, when you're in doing the balloon test, have folks check the stakes and if necessary, hang ribbon at least so board members who visit the site can see where that's going. The road.
Mr. Phelps, could I ask a question for Patriots Way?
Dave, yes.
Does the planning board plan on being at the balloon trial?
I do.
I would think the majority would be, if not everyone.
As previously stated, we would be, yes.
Okay, so I would just ask that we coordinate this so that as abutters that we can meet with you and show you our concerns?
I don't know how we would work that out. I would say if people are there during these timeframes, when the balloons are floated, people will be there, I mean.
Well, it's just like scheduling a meeting. If you say you're there at 9 o'clock, we'll all meet you there at 9 o'clock.
No, we cannot meet like that together. We individually, yes. But if we have more than three people together, it's considered a quorum and the meeting would have to be posted. So you can talk to each of us individually.
Why can't we have a quorum?
No, Attorney Fenton, I'm sorry, I get back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sylvester, would you mind speaking to the status of staking at the site currently? To the best of your knowledge, I know some were removed.
Yes, some were removed about 700 feet from the edge of the Liberty Lane into the site. Straight, the most straight part of the driveway. So 700 feet and the rest are still on, at least what we know to this point, they're still on the site. So half, half the road to driveway is reportedly to have no stakes from the beginning to halfway towards the compound.
And Sylvester, they were, that's, that area was staked, but they were removed by vandals, is that right?
That is correct, there was stake, we collected the data, we needed. And then on the next day, as we continue, the, the, those stakes were removed by vandals.
So that is the current status, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we would appreciate a minimum staking of that area if possible, or ribbons, as I said, I've worked with other committees and it's, you know, ribbons are fine, you don't have to have a wooden stake. Just to get a general idea of the location as we walk that area.
Phelps, this is, can I be, sir, this is Jack Ng, 39 Deer Run?
Yes.
Um, if I'd be willing to, anybody on the board, the planning board that wants to, and I'm stable too, and others, well, if you want us to show you from the road to the Verizon proposed site, we're happy to walk that way. So it won't be group of three, it could be just not two of us walking from the road, from the entrance all the way to, so you get a full idea of exactly how long the road is and where it's gonna take place, if you haven't already. Might have to walk you there.
Yeah. I personally have been on the site twice several years ago when I was on the Conservation Commission. Similar situation with a balloon test. So I don't know if any of the other members want to make arrangements, but I think it's just gonna be, if we're there and you're there, we can visit. I want to move this along, finish out here, I'd like to continue this hearing. When's our next meeting, Alan? December? Whatever.
15th, December 15th.
Thank you, Megan. December 15th. Uh, we'll continue the hearing till that date at, can we do 7:15 again? Do we have anything coming on?
We don't have anything proposed at this time.
Let's do 7:15 in case we get a sign review or A and R or whatever coming in. Some time to work on that.
Are you going to give all of these Zoom meeting information tonight?
I have to defer to Mr. Doherty, he's the technical guy here.
I'm doing it right now, trying to.
So I entertain a motion to continue this hearing to December 15th at 7:15 PM.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fenton?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, it will not be possible for us to prepare the photo simulations by that date. We're certainly happy to come and present on other aspects of our application or other open questions. But ideally, we would, we would ask to have more time to prepare the complete simulation packet. That's only, it's one or, it's basically just one business day after the date of the float, so that will not be enough time for us.
Megan, what do we have for a meeting date after?
January 5th and January 19th.
January 5th?
January 5th or January 19th?
Mr. Phelps, or maybe this is a question for Mr. Campanelli. Where do we stand with shot clock?
That's up to the, the board and the applicant. When was the completed application submitted, Mr. Fenton?
April 9th, 2020.
So what is your position as to when the shot clock expires?
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay, well, would you agree to extend the shot clock with the board to enable them sufficient time to review whatever final submissions you make?
Guess I would need more specificity around exactly what you're asking for, Mr. Campanelli.
Well, as you know, when you have a new tower, your shot clock is 150 days from when the, the application is submitted. Typically, when the applicant agrees to have a balloon test and a subsequent public hearing, if the shot clock were to run in the interim, applicants will typically agree to extend the shot clock to at least 10 days after the last public hearing. That will enable this board to review whatever evidence that you submit, consider it, and then issue written determination. So at a minimum, if you think the shot clock would run by December 15th or January, do we say January 5th? Is that the date that we're choosing now of 2021?
That's, that's a possible date.
Okay, well, if Mr. Fenton agrees to that date, I would ask that Mr. Fenton agree on the record at a minimum that the shot clock be extended to no earlier than at least 1/15 of, of 2021, because that would enable this board to review whatever submissions he gives you and to make an informed decision and reduce your decision to writing.
We have not performed a shot clock analysis for purposes of the timelines that you're referencing, so I'm not in a position to make that commitment tonight without speaking to my client.
Okay.
Mr. Phelps?
Alan, I'm gonna ask you to, to do some research on that timeframe. So in lieu of that, I want to put this on as a continued hearing, December 15th at 7:15.
Mr. Phelps, may I offer something?
Sure, Mr. Doherty.
Uh, Michael Doherty, 16 Lexington Circle. I just want to make sure, just in my role previously when I was chairing it before I had to recuse myself, you know, we do have to consider the fact that there were governor's orders suspending deadlines and what have you, as well as the fact that there were no ability to conduct meetings to some degree. So my understanding, and I believe it's to be weighed in by town council, but if not, should be, should be talked to them again, was that we were going by the date of the first hearing, when the, when the hearing was substantively opened, which was what, October of, I forget if that was October 6th or was it before, that was in September, but.
September 22nd.
Okay, so September 22nd is, I thought the date we were using, which off the top of my head, I had February 19th in my head, but I could be wrong. So that's at least what I had in my head. I don't really think we've gotten a firm opinion from town council and to some degree, it's a bit of the wild, wild west with the governor's orders and how those apply. But so I just wanted to raise that since that was previously involved with that.
I mean, just so the town doesn't find itself in a bind, I would respectfully suggest that town council reach out to Mr. Fenton between now and the next meeting and see if the applicant and its attorney would stipulate to the running of the shot clock or the extension thereof to the extent necessary to enable Mr. Fenton to submit his additional evidence and for the board to consider it and to then make an informed decision on the application. I wouldn't leave this in a gray area because if you blow the shot clock, then within 30 days, the applicant can file a simple federal complaint. And shortly after that, a federal judge is gonna order you to issue the approval for the tower. So I wouldn't leave this area unresolved.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to continue this hearing to December 15th at 7:15. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
David Sutton moved, I need a second.
Dave Spina, second.
Thank you, David Spina. Roll call, vote. Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have Zoom information?
Alan, go ahead.
We, we still had the Zoom information.
Oh, sorry. Let's see, the Zoom is in the chat room, it's 806, 860 Passcode 374130. It will be posted on our public announcement of the agenda. And whatever else, wherever else we do it, thank you for folks participating. I'm turning the meeting back to Chairman Doherty for the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Marcus. All right, so the only other thing we have on, I believe, are the minutes. And I had meant to send those out the other day and couldn't, so I just sent them out today. They have a decent amount of additional information in them after having listened to the meeting. So if, if anybody feels, I mean, don't be shy if you feel you need more time to look at them.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to look at either the updated minutes from last meeting or the minutes before that you edited.
We'll get them next time.
Okay, so that's, we'll just defer that to the next time. I will, I know Meg sent me the, well, that's from the October 20th one that I sent out today. Meg sent the November 10th over. I think that's, is that right, November 10th? Yeah. I will edit those and circulate those, however, at this point, it has to be someone else taking the laboring or on the minutes from this meeting. I can't, I can't be the one to, you know, be putting in that type of, those changes on a, on a, on a meeting minutes where the here, you know, the, the 95% of it is the hearing that I can't participate in. So, and I probably, I need to check this, but I'm pretty sure I can't vote on those meeting minutes going forward, so. So, but like I said, I'll, I'll get the November 10th ones around too, so next meeting. And I'll do it with time to spare, so next meeting you all can look at both the October 20th, which I sent out today, and the November 10th, which I'll send out, and we'll get those approved and, and done. Anything else we need to talk about today? Oh, you know, the other, I just didn't get a chance with everything going on to pull all the information together about that short-term rental committee, subcommittee.
pull all the information together about that short-term rental committee, subcommittee. Um, I know there's someone who's reached out to Doug who was interested in it. So I just asked Doug to reach out to him and just let him know that it's on me and I just didn't get it done. Um, but hopefully next meeting, we can at least get that in the process, you know. Um, you know, I, I do have some with everything going on with this Verizon hearing, um, you know, I don't necessarily want someone from the planning board having to deal with a subcommittee, um, as well. Um, you know, that's a lot on their plate. So, but as this is starting to sort of hopefully wrap up, um, you know, we can at least start to get that subcommittee going, um, and, and hopefully get it in full force once this, once this hearing is done. Um, so at some point, and I'll have Meg put on the agenda for next time, we'll just, we'll raise the people who've expressed interest and, um, talk about setting up that subcommittee. Anything else?
Uh, the only thing I, I wanted to follow up, uh, Alan, can you do some, uh, date checking? We, we want to watch this clock. And, uh, if you need to talk to town council or if you're communicating on something else, uh, we want to get this set up so we don't get caught because oval could happen, unfortunately. If, I mean, not unfortunate, without our decision being made, that's the unfortunate part. We don't want to get caught with the clock.
Yeah, I would just reach out to Ben. I, I did, and I can't remember. I, I just can't remember whether, I don't think we've gotten a final opinion on it. I feel like I discussed it with either Mark or Ben. I can't remember, you know, just preliminarily, I discussed it with him. I have in my head that we're going by the date of the first hearing, um, and that's when it started. Um, but, you know, I, I'm certainly reach out to them and, and have them better uh, refresh my memory or at least offer what, you know, they, their memory was. Um, and if not, if, if they don't remember or we didn't talk about it, then, um, have them look into it. But I think that, I do think that those governor's orders, you know, impact, I don't think a deadline starts. I, I don't know how you could possibly argue that a deadline starts when you can't hold a meeting, but, um.
Well, that was, yeah, the submission was April something, so.
Correct. I, and I, you know, I remember us talking about it in April and, or not April, uh, whenever we first did it, was it May or June? Um, you know, we talked about whether we had to go forward with that, and I think the consensus was that we, you know.
Typically, what it does go Mike, Michael is first, first publication when it goes into the newspaper to say that there's going to be a meeting September the twenty-second, which is typically two weeks before that. I think there's some, there's some litigation to the the notification of the first meetings. So we would have to look at Megan, you know, Megan, we could look at when would the first, first app, when it was first put in the newspaper. And I think, and, and I think, and I think Attorney Fenton, at the time when we first had the meeting, he was agreeable to the fact that we were, even though it was a little behind schedule, he knew that we were under certain constraints. And he had agreed, uh, to go by those guidelines.
Whatever, I think we need to make sure we got it right. Because if it's, if it's verbal and not in writing, doesn't matter, I don't think. Whatever.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Mogan.
So, I, I strongly suggest you get an opinion from town council because tolling was suspended during COVID by governor's order, but was recently resumed under legislation that was very recently passed within the last month. So I don't know what the actual shot clock is on this, but tolling has resumed. So you definitely don't want to put yourself in a position where you somehow grant either effective constructive approval or direct constructive approval, right? Um, so by all means, contact council and get that date. And then you ask Mr. Fenton for a continuance in writing. Of course, we've done that when I was on the board many, many times. So you, you can go from there. And if he doesn't grant it, then you close the hearing and make your decision based on the data you have in front of you. That's what you have to do because you have to have a decision on writing. You do not want to have the, the shot clock expire.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, um.
I think Dave Sutton might still be there. I don't know. There he is.
Getting ready to make some French toast.
That's, you know, you're going to deliver it too? What, what's going on here?
Make a motion, end the meeting?
Are you a second?
Marcus Phelps, second.
Uh, do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.